All right, welcome everyone to today's Board of Commissioners special meeting. It is October 25th, it is 1:00 PM. I'll call the meeting to order. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, amendment and approval of the agenda. I don't have any amendments.
Neither do I. I'll move to approve the agenda.
And I'll second it. All in favor?
Yes.
And yes, motion passes two to zero. I did speak to Commissioner Herzog earlier today. He called me and said he wouldn't be able to make the meeting. So he's out of town and not able to attend. So next up on the agenda is public comments. And I just want to remind the public when it comes to those who are watching our meetings sometimes, keep in mind when we have public comments that there is no fact checking, there is no verification. Pretty much anybody can step up to the microphone and say anything they want. And I would encourage the viewers to verify information before you react to it and before you criticize and jump on social media. So, that being said, public comments. And first up is Michelle Martin.
I'm Michelle Martin and I reside in Curry County. I just had one question. Did you have a DOC meeting yesterday?
No.
No, okay, because I didn't see it posted.
We did not.
And I was wondering if there was one. And as far as public comments goes, our citizens for Curry County that support our sheriff, we speak the truth. And if you have any questions, you can always PM one of us. We can give you the information needed to prove what we say up here in front of all of you is true and factual. And so anyways, that's all I have to say. I was just curious if you had one or not, because it wasn't posted. Thank you.
All right, the other public comment I have is from Catherine. That's a topic specific which we're going to move forward into now. So Catherine, why don't you step up and make your public comment?
I'm Catherine Bernhardt. I'm the manager of Curry Public Transit. And I appreciate you hearing what we need to have heard today. Over the past four years since COVID hit, all of us have been remiss in keeping up with what needs to be done. And I want to get that fixed. And I know that Kena wants to get it fixed. And I know you'd want to get it fixed. So what I'm hoping to ask you to do today is look at the different documents that have expired, the committee memberships that have expired, and extend those to give us enough time to get new documentation going. We need a contract with your company or with the county. And the contract right now is really out of date. I think it was written in like 2010. We need to have an advisory committee meeting soon. I have our biannual grants for 2025 to '27 coming due on the 15th of October. And those have to go through the advisory committee and through the board before I can submit them. So there's a real tight time crunch on that. So I appreciate your time. I am here to answer any questions, to give any information you need to ask. I'm an open book, so use me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving into discussion action item 4A, which is Curry County Public Transit Discussion. Kena?
So on Tuesday of this week, Catherine and myself met with two representatives from ODOT as well as two auditing partners that ODOT has hired to do the audit of federal awards of our transit dollars. I think it was a very, it was a very good audit. We did have some findings that need to be brought up, things that we need to address. Generally speaking, the audit firm did feel that they are confident in my abilities to help turn this program around, which was, I think, very nice to hear. They said that the governing board needs to be more engaged and have more oversight in regards to the transit dollars. We, as the county, are responsible for transit dollars. These monies are, yes, they're pass-through monies, but these monies are issued to a sub-recipient. The sub-recipient is held by a contract and we are required to ensure and audit the sub-recipient to make sure that they are using the funds appropriately within the scope. And all the liability lays on the county's shoulders for this.
Yeah, yeah.
Jennifer Boardman with ODOT would like to provide trainings for you as commissioners in regards to the use and the appropriate use of these dollars. We need to ensure that we are compliant with a contract. Contract language, as Catherine stated, is very outdated. So what I'm going to ask along with Catherine today is I would ask that you guys extend the expired contract through March 31st of '25 to allow us enough time to go out for an RFP. I think it's really important, these are federal dollars and state dollars. So we need to go out for requests, proposals, and give a fair opportunity for anybody that would want to apply for these funds. We also need to do compliance audits on whoever is awarded these funds. Make sure we do sub-recipient audits. There's kind of contracts and templates that are sent out by ODOT for us to follow. We need to make sure we are following our bylaws, the bylaws of the Transit Advisory Committee. We are not in compliance currently. The committee is a county committee. I think the last time they met were January of '23, which we're supposed to meet at least two times a year per bylaws. What I'm asking is you review the list. I believe you have a list of the term dates in there, which I think the most current is in there. Do you have that in there? Okay. I don't know if you want to extend the current committee's dates in order to get the timelines that we have. So Catherine, I don't know if you want to elaborate a little bit more on that, but there is, I believe, $650,000 grant that Commissioner Herzog had signed.
And that was a stiff discretionary grant with a very, very tight timeline.
Yes.
I take full responsibility for not following the exact rules. But because it was a discretionary grant, I wasn't aware that it had to go all the way through all the committee meetings. So I apologize for that. It is for replacement of four buses in 2027 and '28. So it is very, very doubtful we'll get this, because the monies that we're competing for, there's an overextension of millions of dollars. There's, I think, 61 different asks for the same money. So I went ahead and applied for it. I don't really need it. I can always get another STBG or 5311F grant to replace those buses. I have plenty of time to do that. So we went through the process with, like I always have, of putting it through OPTUS and having it approved by the liaison from the board, which is Mr. Herzog. He's done this for us for three years now. So yeah, that one needs to come to the committee.
So is that the tight turnaround one that you're talking about?
Yeah, that's the buses, the four bus replacements.
So can I?
Go ahead.
So we have learned that this is, you're not unique in this scenario. There've been a lot of grants and contracts that have been signed inappropriately without county authorization, all with the best intentions, but not appropriate. And so, you know, a lot of, what maybe not quite understood in this scenario, a lot of the scenarios, is that with every grant, the reason why it requires the Board of Commissioners in terms of a sign-off is that there are parameters in which the grant has to be responded to, applied, et cetera, reported on. And the county is the one who's on the hook for all those things. And so it's, that's why it goes that way. So what I would ask is that even though you have already sent off this with Commissioner Herzog's signature only, which I wish he was here, because that is obviously, it's completely inappropriate. And we've discussed this. So if you could, even though it's already been sent off, to just make sure that we do it correctly, let's do it again. Not the send-off piece, you've already done that. But at least we'll have the grant information in front of the board for approval. And so how it works is, it requires an approval to apply and then an approval to receive.
Absolutely.
Right?
You have every opportunity to deny that grant if it is approved.
Correct.
What I would ask you to do is when and if we can get the advisory committee to meet, if we could have a joint meeting.
I love it. Workshop, let's do it.
A workshop and we can get that grant, the 5310, the 5311, and a proposal for the STIF, which is due in January, all taken care of with one full swoop.
I think it'd be great, because I'll be completely honest, the Curry Transit portion of all of this that we do is one of the things that I'm least knowledgeable about. Commissioner Herzog has taken the lead on a lot of those things. So I would really like to entertain doing a workshop and learning more about what's going on there.
If you can extend the expiration dates of the committee, I can get a note out to everybody today, this afternoon, and set a meeting up for what is best for you.
Well, we can work through, we can work on that offline in terms of setting a date.
But it has to be either the end of next week, because I'll be gone for three days, or the beginning of the week after that.
Go ahead.
It would need to be at least the week, that week later. Because of the amount of time that we need to publicly post. With that being said, it is a county committee, and I think it's really important that we try to do this right. And we bring the county committee back to the county and have Natasha be the one to reach out to the individuals and start that relationship of it being a county committee instead of...
I'm just a member of the committee.
Absolutely.
I'm actually, I think, the secretary of that committee.
And that brings it along with all other committees that the county has.
So we're going to do it, right? And I agree with everything Commissioner Trow said in terms of the workshop. We should do the training too. We should try to combine that as best we can. And, you know, having been on the Budget Committee for a number of years, I will say, being on the Budget Committee, we were told by past finance directors, basically, this is a pass-through, there's nothing to see here, nothing to worry about, leave it alone. And that's pretty much how past finance... Exactly. So to your defense, I know that's how, that's how it was handled in the past. We're trying to clean all of that stuff up as much as we can.
And I really admire you for doing that, because it's been needed for a while.
And, you know, like Commissioner Trow said, it's not, it's not just this. It's, there's a number of these, especially when it comes to contracts and it comes to all of the other financial stuff. This is, you've heard me, if you've heard me say something in the past, that some of the information we had on the Budget Committee was definitely imperfect, this would be one of those things. And again, no fault to you. It, we have to change these things. We have to. And we have to be current and we have to follow law, we have to follow our county policies, and we have to do what's ethically correct.
As your vendor, I am 100%. I'm the one that hears from ODOT, and I've been doing all of the, all of the legwork for Transit for 18 years now. Well, actually, eight years as manager. And they're just now getting to the point where they're saying, wait a minute, we need to have more oversight. And I'm all for that. I feel like I've been wunderly win. I've been doing it right, but I've been in the wind.
Yeah, yeah, and you're absolutely correct. And, you know, this stuff evolves too. It changes. And we need to, we need to be current.
It has changed.
We need to stay on top of it, and that's the best way we can do it.
Well, if we can work closely, I'd really appreciate it.
Well, let's shoot for that, the beginning of that following week?
Yeah, the beginning of November.
Yeah. I think that we can, we'll work out a date and we'll get that squared away and have Natasha send out the invites and get the meeting, the workshop posted, and we'll go, we'll get it done.
Okay.
And if things come up that are time-sensitive, we can always schedule an emergency meeting for those types of scenarios. You know, we don't want to lose out on a grant because we were...
Oh, I, if I lost out on a grant, it would, I haven't yet.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
When they do these tight turnarounds, it really puts pressure on...
Sure.
I am a one-person show. I have a part-time bookkeeper and a full-time dispatcher, and that's it. So, yeah, so let me, let me know. Like I said, I will be in, at a meeting for three days, the first part of next week. But I'm available by phone or by text, so.
Perfect. Well, with all that, I will move to extend the current contract through the month of March to provide time to get this contract up to date and prepared for signature.
And I'll second it. All in favor?
Yes.
And yes, motion passes two to zero. Thank you.
Could we also have a motion to extend...
The committee?
The committee through similar period.
Through March?
Yes.
Yep, I will move to extend the committee appointments through the end of March as well as we work through this contract.
And I'll second it. All in favor?
Yes.
And yes, motion passes two to zero.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you very much, Catherine, especially for your patience in all this too. So does that get us through all of the topics under Curry County Public Transit?
I believe so.
Okay.
Back to work.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you so much.
All right, we'll move on to 4B, which is personnel rules amendment. Is that Kena's or Ted?
So the amendment, excuse me, the amendment would be to Article 4, Section A. It's just revising the language, stating that all county employees will be held to disciplinary action.
Held to county personnel rules?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with this.
As do I. Is there any discussion, Jay?
I don't have any.
No?
No.
I'd entertain a motion then.
I'll move to amend Article 4, subject to personnel rules, that all county employees are subject to the personnel rules and subsequent discipline thereof.
All right, I will second that motion. All in favor?
Yes.
And yes, motion passes two to zero. Next up is C, allocation of opioid settlement funds, Sheriff's Office. Kena?
So you had requested, or the commission had requested, current balance number of opioid funds. So 382,467.71 is what we have to date. I anticipate another $75,000 coming in this fiscal year. We've actually, I think Ted can speak to this as well, there's actually two additional settlements that we are a part of with other counties in regards to opioid funds. So there's potential for actually more money coming in.
Okay. And on this particular request that Lieutenant Crone had made, where do we sit on that?
So I did some further review of the request that Lieutenant Crone made, and I want to bring to light a couple different things that, from a financial perspective, that we need to keep in mind. First of all, Lieutenant Crone had stated that it could exceed the $36,000 when I had asked the question last week. So that would be an intermediate procurement by Oregon State procurement laws. That then shouldn't be a single-source procurement, meaning that we need to go out for an RFP, because more than likely, there is more than one place that can provide us with telehealth capabilities, and we need to give, again, equal opportunity for people to apply for these contracts. And in addition to that, there is not a contract. I know that he did say that he had reached out and spoke with some different individuals, but there's not a contract attached. So we don't know what to, the not-to-exceed number would be. We don't know what services exactly are going to be provided. So I'm a little bit leery of that on a financial aspect for allowing you guys enough information to approve it.
I'm very leery of that. We don't, we can't appropriately...
Because we essentially, or you would essentially be saying $36,000, but we can't guarantee that these would be in compliance with opioid expenditures at this point in time, based on not having a contract to review.
Okay. Okay, so in order to move that forward, we would need, we would need those protocols to be followed.
Yes, and it's standard county procurement rules and state procurement laws, too.
Okay. Because I do support the use of it for that, but I want to make sure that we're following our own policies and our state procurement policies.
We are, we are still watched closely with our monies, and because we are high-risk due to findings in prior audits, so we will be watched very closely until we're no longer a high-risk audit. Therefore, we want to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's and are expending our money appropriately and have the audit trail to be able to back that up.
Okay. So then to move this forward, can you then maybe walk Lieutenant Crone through the, whatever he needs to...
Absolutely. I'd be more than happy to work with him and let him know what we need is, we do need to go out for an RFP, request for proposals for these services.
Okay.
And then we could award...
Then once we have that, we can bring it back.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. All right, so we won't be able to move that forward, but potentially...
Oh, absolutely, yeah. If we have all that information, we could most definitely.
Okay, any further discussion, Jay? On that? Okay. Then we will move forward to D, which is allocation of opioid settlement funds, SRO-CRO. So Kena, you want to go into that?
So for the opioid settlement funds for the SRO-CRO, this would fall into a different category in regards to procurements, because it's a specific, a specific resource that we would need. Therefore, we could reach out to current partners in order to sole-source those resources. After reviewing funding that we have, I do believe that we would be able to sustain this at least for three years, based on what I'm seeing currently. Being successful, if it's a successful program, we could absolutely reach out to other partner agencies and also look for additional grants to move this forward if it's something that, that, you know, it turns out to be super-successful and the commission wishes to do so.
Yep, yep. Okay. And just to, just for the public watching, we're talking about the opioid funds. Those are opioid settlement funds that we've had. I don't, do you remember when we first got them, what year it was?
Two years ago, I believe?
At least two years ago.
21.
Yeah. So those funds have sat in a fund, they weren't being used, we, well, they were being used by juvenile, our juvenile department. There are specific criteria that must be followed for the funds to be used. And again, they weren't being used. We made some recommendations to the Sheriff's Office. They weren't interested in them, so we reached out through a board action. The board had me reach out to Gold Beach. I met with them, and they were able to look at the requirements for the funds to be used. In fact, Sergeant Burchell did a very deep dive into that and found that there are agencies that are using the money for this. And then structured a program around that and presented that. And we would all agree that there is a strong need for a school resource officer in Central and North County, and they're agreeing to provide that service. So this is something that I definitely support and would like to move forward.
I would too, 100%. You know, I think some of the best use of these funds is in the prevention portion of opioids.
Especially at that age.
Right. And so the, the one thing that I would continue to advocate for is that this kind of be treated as a pilot program, where, you know, we get it up and running, get it, you know, provide some of the funding to get it up and running, but then the subsequent school districts then also start to assist in the funding to give it more sustainability, you know, long-term. And so...
Well, that's part of, you know, partnering with...
Oh, certainly, but, you know, I think we need to, we need to kind of have that as a, as a follow-up kind of game plan, you know, to try to work that arrangement out with the, with the school districts.
Yeah, and that's, and that, all of that has been, all of that has definitely been discussed, and, you know, that is really the future, especially with the financial situation we're in, is partnering with our allied agencies and our other districts to, to get the most out of the funding that we do have. So, yeah. Agree, agree.
However, with this, it will require...
I think we need to repeal the previous motion.
Or amend?
I think we just repeal it.
Okay. Can, can, can you amend a board order?
I think you could, I think you'd have to move to repeal it, and then you, then just, then do a new one.
Okay.
I think we repeal it. We would repeal what's existing, and then we would approve what we want to do.
Okay. Okay. Well, the first, first things first then, I would appeal, I would, I would move to repeal Board Order 23353.
Okay, I would second that. All in favor?
Yes.
And yes, motion passes two to zero.
And I would move to approve a board order in the matter of allocating opioid settlement funding with the change being that opioid funds will be dispersed at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners. And we can put a caveat that there's a certain amount that we're identifying for the juvenile services, and then a certain amount if we want to, for this position.
Right.
What do you, what say you, do you want to make it that specific?
I think that's a sufficient motion.
Well... Okay. So, motion to, motion to create a board order allocating the opioid settlement funds, whereas the Curry County Board of Commissioners have discretionary ability to appoint the use of those funds. And that the juvenile program will continue to be funded out of these funds, as well as the CRO slash SRO role being provided by Gold Beach PD.
Per the IGA.
Per the IGA.
All right, I would second that motion. All in favor?
Yes.
And yes, motion passes two to zero. All right, so what happens now is that we'll go to Gold Beach PD for... All right, so what happens now is that we'll go to Gold Beach PD for the final approval, and then I'll move forward.
Well, I think we need to approve the IGA as well, that was just for the board order, but I think we need to approve the IGA, the intergovernment agreement itself.
Okay.
It's been, it's been, we recirculated it to Gold Beach, and they came back with their comments, and we incorporated them, so this is the completed IGA.
And their council has also obviously looked it over.
I assume, yeah.
I think it still has to be approved by them, but.
Right, but I mean.
But, yeah.
They would have, that's who would have been probably providing the comments. So, I will move to approve the IGA with Gold Beach Police Department to provide, well, actually, resend that. Would the I, would, the IGA would be with the City of Gold Beach, who would then appoint it to their police department.
Right.
Okay. So, I'll move to approve the IGA with the City of Gold Beach for Gold Beach Police Department to provide SRO and CRO duties based on these opioid settlement funds as per the previous board order.
And I'll second that. So, motion to second, all in favor?
Yes.
And yes, motion passes two to zero. All right, any further discussion on that?
Nothing on that.
All right, we'll move forward then to number five in the agenda, which is public safety update. No one is here from the sheriff's office, so now we'll move into number six, Director of County Operations update.
I don't have anything for you today at this special meeting.
All right, and we will move into elected official updates. Commissioner-elect Collinger is here. Patrick?
Oh, like I, like I stated at the previous commissioner meeting, I also agree with the release of those funds for the SRO and CRO position, and in previous conversations we've, we've had, Brad and Jay, I know your backgrounds as well, and I know, and I've heard a lot of the stories that you guys have had in regards to these positions and the strong outcome that it has and an impression that it makes on, on the kids that it's going to help serve, and I, I look forward to seeing that within the schools, and I hope that the program is, is well-looked over, and although it's being approved today, I hope that we all stay on top of it, and it's expected that we stay on top of it to make sure that it's successful, and to make sure that it's having the outcome that we all wish that it has, so, thank you, and I look forward to see where it continues to go.
Yeah, thank you, Patrick. All right, now it's time for commissioner updates. Jay?
Yeah, so, I attended the advanced health citizen advisory committee, meeting yesterday. That's not a lot to report, I will keep banging the drum of behavioral health and public health, I will say that I have been receiving really good information that I've been forwarding to Ted to get to you guys on the, the public health side of things. We've gotten, I, I believe, OHA has really been working hard to get a solid provider, there's a few missing links still, there's some areas to where, you know, there's, so public health in itself is obviously, it's a, it's service-based, not revenue-based, with the exception of one specific area, which is health inspections, public health inspections on restaurants, pools, hotels, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That one is revenue generating. One of the issues that they're having is finding a public health inspector to service Curry. It used to be Josephine, they've kind of backed away because, well, they started backing away back when the 101 was closed due to the fires and things of that nature, and they kind of never really got back into the groove. So, it is a revenue-positive position, it generally generates revenue because the inspections are paid for by the, by the people being inspected, and so, it, it, you know, maybe something that we want to look at, that portion of public health beginning to kind of take back oversight of. And then the behavioral health piece, I know we've been talking, we need to get on this, we need to, you know, we've had a lot of things come up, but we can't let this slip, but, you know, we, we put out those goals to the current provider, and.
Reconvene that group.
We need to reconvene that group and review where we are with those goals, I mean, we're now fourteen months later from setting those goals, and so, I think it's, I think it's time to reconvene that workshop, call those folks back, and get some, get some information out. I know some of the things that we really pressed on, which was having a, a walk-in center in Port Orford, reallocating or getting the Blue Building over there back up and running has not been achieved. I know that we asked that they had open access for members of the public at large, that has yet to be achieved. I do believe they are working to get somebody in the schools, which was another one of the goals, but I don't know that it's been fully realized. We also have some other areas, you know, they've, traditionally, the Behavioral Health Center has always been in charge of, and they get paid for by All Care and Advanced Health to provide UAs for the juveniles and et cetera, that cost has been put back on the actual juvenile department, however, Wendy did push back, and she got the funding that we approved receiving, she got the funding from All Care that was going to adapt for that service because that service wasn't being provided, so now I guess that part is being done in-house, but there's, that, there was a long list of goals that we had kind of set out with them, and we just, it's time to review those goals.
Yeah.
The other thing that was brought up was, and it, I think it's, I think it's smart to really look into this, but I guess, close to thirty years ago, there used to be like a Southern Oregon Leadership Council, essentially, the, it was the leadership from Kuz, Kuz and Curry would have, you know, quarterly meetings to discuss things that were pertinent to both areas. It included the Board of Commissioners, it included city admin, city, city council members, mayors, schools, but it was, you know, there's the Lane Council of Governments, it was basically the Southern Oregon Council of Governments, and this ties really close into what we had been discussing at our last AOC meeting, when we talked about trying to align areas where we can provide shared resources, where we can't each afford one, but we could afford one together.
Right.
In certain circumstances, and where we can work to consolidate, to, to really address both of our, well, most all rural counties right now are in financial despair, and, you know, part of the reason is, is rural counties already run very skinny, most people in rural counties' government wear multiple hats already, and so, when we have the level of inflation that we've seen over the last year and a half, coupled with, you know, no change in revenue coming in, the only answer is to downsize, and rural counties have little, very little space to downsize. So, we're seeing it, we're seeing this trend across, not just counties, but cities and schools and other areas, hospital districts, but, so, I think it's worth investing some time and effort into the Southern Oregon, you know, council idea, Leadership Council idea.
Yeah, Elkhog works.
Yeah.
Elkhog works well.
So, that's really all I have.
Okay. I want to talk about emergency management real quick, a couple of things on that, first of all, as you know, Jeff Hughes is our emergency manager right now, and he was a former deputy who was laid off, and we were able to put him in that position, and he has been absolutely just killing it over there, doing a great job, and he has been in communication with our state emergency managers, preparing for anything that might have come out of the upcoming election, and I just want the public to know that he's been in communication with them, just monitoring potential problems, threats, that kind of thing, and, and is very much on top of it. Also, earlier this week, we had a preparedness meeting with a bunch of our community partners, police departments, et cetera, Port Orford, Central, and some in South County, so our dispatch was present, and it was a productive meeting, just being as proactive with our planning as we can, and that's one of the thing that, things that Jeff has been focusing on is, as we move out of fire season, already preparing for next fire season, right, and staging resources, you know, itemizing and inventorying resources and making sure that we've got everything we need, and, and I just want to say publicly, say thank you to Jeff for all that he's doing, and let the public know that we are, our emergency management is very prepared. Next, I wanted to also talk about, when we had our preparedness meeting, it was out at the fairgrounds, and while I was there, I happened to walk through the, the area that they are preparing for the haunted house, and, man, it is absolutely amazing, the kids are going to have, they're going to have a blast there, they're, they've got a bunch of volunteers out there, there, there's actually a couple people who were vacationing here, and they were staying at Honey Bear, and they saw Terry's post about volunteering, and they came down and started volunteering, and they've got some pretty good skill sets and, and been able to put some really cool stuff together, so that starts tonight, actually, I think tonight's the first night, but we've got some, some kids who are volunteering as actors and role players, and it's, it's pretty cool. And the other thing that I noticed when I was there was a bunch of guys doing work on the roof at the fairgrounds. Man, we have been talking about that for so long, and it is actually being done, they were out there working on it, and it's.
Roof of the arena?
Yeah, and it is, it is great to see, you know, we went through a lot of struggles, we created some change, and to see the progress that's coming out of that, it's, it's, it's great. Also, I wanted to let the public know, if you have kids, Halloween next week, we have the, the crawl at the courthouse, and that's, we'll have some booths set up, and that's, so the kids can trick-or-treat here at the courthouse from three to five. And then the last thing I want to remind everybody, this is a really important election, make sure to vote, make sure your neighbors are voting, make sure everybody's voting, your vote counts, it matters, and this is a, a really important election, so every vote counts, and that's all I have. So, if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn the meeting at one forty-four.